The funds we received from the U.S. Bureau of Justice Assistance for the expansion of the Arrest Division Program, Divergent Program, will be used to increase the number of officers and make our Police Department Mental Health Unit expand and grow. The program ensures officers are properly equipped and safely respond to these individuals and direct them to treatment that they need. The unit that will be revealed today is just a sample of how important this issue is, not only to our city but to the support that we are willing to give to our citizens, that they receive the help that they need. In Mission, everyone counts. We're all important. Let's leave the stigma behind and learn more about this topic. Let's support those who need it and move forward together. Today, our city, our police department, is clearly demonstrating our commitment to those who suffer from this condition, not by excluding them, but by integrating them.
Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started. It's 3:34, and I'm going to call this meeting to order.
4:30.
4:34. It is 4:34, I'm sorry. Yes. And today is Monday, January 23rd. So the first item is Established Quorum.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Norrie Gonzalez-Garza.
Present.
Councilwoman Jessica Ortega.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Ruben Plata.
Present.
Councilman Alberto Vela.
Present.
Mayor, we establish quorum. We're still pending Councilman Abiel Flores to arrive.
Next item is invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we pray for your protection and care over our families. We ask for your hand to cover us all. Set your way before us, and for all, your plans will succeed. Thank you for your abundance grace that carries us through each new day. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated.
We're going to deviate a little from the agenda, so the next item, we're going to hear from our chamber. Ms. Enriquez.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this week, we have a few educational programs available for our members, and of course, anybody else who would like to join the chamber, they're welcome to join with us as well. We have on Wednesday, the Power of Business Planning and How It Can Impact Your Business. Pre-planning is always great, and it's better than being reactive. Proactive is always the way to go. And that is in partnership with the SBDC Center. This Thursday, we also have Payroll Compliance for Small Businesses. And at 2:00, we will be hosting Chamber Orientation for current and new members. And the Tourism Efforts, this Friday, we will be gladly hosting our sister cities' guests. Our Traditional Dinner will be held at the Chamber of Commerce. The Dress Attire will be casual, and we will be promoting the city, places to eat and places to shop. And we will be giving them dinner, really good barbecue options for them. We're also excited, our Board of Directors, our Vice Chairman of Tourism, and our Tourism Team is excited to join the Mayor's International Breakfast this weekend. And we are continuing for next week, for the following week, which is Mission Day in Austin, as we advocate for our community. We're continuing collaboration with the MACD and our elected officials' offices there in Austin, and our city leadership as well. Lastly, we do have a Lunch and Learn scheduled for February 8th, which we will be emailing our members this week. And we continue to promote our Texas Citrus activities, which include the Parade of Oranges and the Fun Fair. And lastly, I'm happy to announce that the Winter Texans Times is the proud sponsor of our 2023 Winter Texan Fiesta. And that's all I have this evening.
Okay. Thank you so much. We're going to go back to item number one, and that's the Personal Self-Defense Awareness Month.
Mayor, Council, yes. Good afternoon. With us today, who's responsible for this proclamation? We have Mr. Dewey Garcia from Tiger Fury. You can come up, please. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the month of January has been designated as Personal Self-Defense Awareness Month with the purpose of educating citizens, especially women and teens, about realistic self-defense options that could very well save their lives. Whereas self-defense is the best way of protecting ourselves through personal self-defense, education, and training. We can be empowered with the right knowledge and the correct tools to stop a potentially life-altering event, prevent an offensive criminal act from negatively impacting our lives. And whereas self-defense is not fighting, self-defense is getting away as safely as possible. It is about applying quick thinking and de-escalating methods to the situation in order to get away. Whereas fear is not real, it is a product of thoughts you create. Don't be mistaken, danger is very real, but fear is a choice. Defend yourself, and you will be safe for today. Teach yourself to defend yourself, and you will be safe for a lifetime. Now, therefore, with the City Council and City of Mission, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2023 as Personal Self-Defense Awareness Month. Proclaim on this 23rd day of January 2023.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion, and a second to accept the proclamation as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
Okay, thank you very much for giving the opportunity to be here. We're going to have, next month in February, we're going to be in one of the Mission Elementary Schools. We're going to select 50 students. We're going to do a scholarship for these students to go compete in July in Las Vegas, you know?
Nice.
And we help in and doing a lot for the community, and we'll see you soon in July here, where the champions.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Thank you. Would you like to come in and take the picture and accept the proclamation? Okay, the next item is our presentation of our 20, 25, 30, and 35-year service awards. Mr. Pettis?
Yes, ma'am. If I can ask, Ms., I'd like to step forward to do the presentations.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and the general public that's here today. It's a real privilege to be able to recognize those individuals that have been with us for quite some time. It is a milestone for these individuals to have dedicated 20 and above number of years to the city, to our residents of Mission, providing their day-to-day services so that we can have the best quality of life for our community. So it gives me great pleasure to introduce them. Mayor, what I'd like to do is I'd like to invite the Council to please come down. We have a small token of appreciation that we've been giving to our employees that reach this milestone, and it is an engraved watch that indicates the number of service that they've been with the City of Mission along with their name. I think this can definitely become a family heirloom, and so that it's something that can be passed on to their family. So I'd like the assistance of the Council to please join me in recognizing these individuals here today. Mayor, we're going to start off with calling of the names. Not every employee will be here. Some of those will still be working or on shift and unable to be here, but certainly it's worthy of recognizing them, the departments that they represent. And so with us here today, I know that he's here, 20 years of service with the Fire Department, Jose Oscar Alanis. These next two individuals are not with us this afternoon, and we have Alain Medran with the Police Department, Gilvado Hernandez with the Streets. Our next individual that is with us today, that is also representing the Mission Police Department, Eduardo Roberto Latine. Our next employee is also a police officer, Daniel Lopez, celebrating 20 years of service. Not with us today is also with Mission Police Department, Charles and then Daniel Lopez. We do have Officer David Mesa, Mission Police Department, 20 years of service. That would be Lieutenant David Mesa. Also with the Mission Police Department, Sergeant Roberto Rodriguez Jr., 20 years of service. Officer Armando Henina Jr., 20 years of service. Also celebrating 20 years of service with the Fire Department is Tony Cervino, Antonio Cervino Jr. With the Water Treatment Plant, Ricardo Vela. 20 years of service, Jennifer El Samona, currently with the Health Department, and her health director, Mr. Daniel Bass. Celebrating 20 years of service, Judge Jonathan Wermeyer, Mission Municipal Court. I'd like to recognize these three employees that are not with us today but also celebrated 20 years of service. Joanne Mungia with the Health Department, Officer Juan Faniagua with Mission Police, and Ignacio Salazan with the Water Treatment Plant. Congratulations, Mission Municipal. Oh, they're here. Celebrating 25 years of service, I'm not sure if he's in his crowd today, representing the water distribution in Raúl Tardosa. He deserves a big round of applause. Celebrating 30 years of service, I'd like to invite our police chief to please join us up here as we take photos of his officers. I'd like to call on first Officer Orlando Serio. Lieutenant Orlando Serio. For the staff, we have Sergeant Victor Solís Jr., also with Mission Police Department. Mayor and Council, we do have Ms. Daya Iris Quintero. She's celebrated 20 years of service, and I'd like to invite her and her director, Ms. Myra Rota, up for a photo. We have one employee this evening that we'd like to recognize for 35 years of service with the Public Works wastewater plant, Rodolfo Garcia Quin. This concludes this particular presentation of our employees celebrating 20 years and above.
Okay, our next item, well, I'd like to congratulate all our recipients, and thank you so much for your service, for your 20, 25, 30, and 35 years of service. That's wonderful. Congratulations to all, and God bless you. The next item is Employee of the Month, December 2022.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the month of December...
Good evening, Mayor and Council, for the month of December 2022, we had two Employee of the Months, I'd like to ask them, as well as their directors, to please come and join me, we have Mr. Rick Contreras, our Aquatics Manager, and Mr. Adrian Guerra, Police Officer, so they could join me up here, as long as, as well as Mr. Benson and Chief Torres, please. Thank you. The nomination reads as follows, "It was December 5th, 2022, and what started out as a typical Monday morning at Mission Parks and Recreation quickly turned to be a game changer for some, and a life-changing event for one pickleball player in particular. A pickleball player came running to the front office advising Mr. George Chapa, Athletic Supervisor, and Pete Charles, Assistant Athletic Supervisor, that there was an unresponsive player face down on the gym floor. When they arrived to the back gym along with Rick Contreras, Aquatics Manager, Missionites Michael Davis and Jerry Bowman had just turned the player over and were assessing the situation, and had just started performing CPR. Pete called 911 and ran outside to wait on an ambulance, and eventually flagged down a passing Mission Police Officer who brought in his AED machine. In the meantime, Rick, a highly skilled Red Cross instructor, replaced Michael and assumed position and continued compressions while Mr. Bowman alternated with ventilations. When Officer Guerra arrived, Rick administered the paddles while Officer Guerra read and listened for instructions from the AED machine. As Rick continued with compressions, a heartbeat was finally attained. Our pickleball player was not breathing on his own, so Mr. Bowman continued with ventilations until Mission Fire Department arrived and took over EMS, and took over, I'm sorry, until EMS arrived. EMS then took our player to Mission Regional Medical Center where he was fully conscious within the hour. We are thankful that Rick, along with our Parks, Police, and Fire staff reacted quickly and without hesitation to assist our citizens." Thank you both, Rick Contreras and Mr. Guerra, Officer Guerra, we appreciate it, thank you. Mr. Benson and Chief Torres would both like to say a few words.
You know, it's, we try to be prepared in situations like this, it is something that us at Parks and Recreation, since we do entertain an older crowd, my generic crowd, but it's something that we need to be prepared for, it's something that we really responded quickly, I say "we," but "we" as a team, you know, it's not only I'm recognizing Rick, I'm recognizing my staff, I think George Chapa's here, Athletic Director, Recreation Supervisor, Pete Lopez is here, the Parks Manager, Pete Charles, Athletic, Assistant Athletic Supervisor's here also, but they all worked as a team, and you know, Rick has always amazed me, I always call him my MacGyver, because he's always fixing things, you know, we avoid a lot of extra expense, because Rick is able to tear into it, but you know, when he tore into this guy here, it really just blew me away, because I know, we get trained, we teach, we train, and we teach, but whenever you're presented to something like this, are you going to remember, are you going to respond, are you going to react quickly without losing your cool, and Rick just goes up there and just starts doing his compressions, and you know, I admire Rick for being able to do that, he is a trained Red Cross instructor, and so he's got a lot of hands-on experience doing this, and for training the kids, but I don't know if you've been able, or have had to, been called to do this before Rick, but you know, I do admire you for what you do. I know Rick didn't want to come up here to receive this award, because this is something that, you know, he's trained to do, and he says until the police officers and the firemen get recognized for their experience with they face on a day-to-day basis, he didn't think that this is something he needed to be recognized for, but anyway, it's kind of coerced him into coming up here, and I do appreciate Rick coming, he's brought his wife and his daughter with him. Anyway, before I pass the mic over to Chief Torres, Randy Hall, the person that went down, had full intention of being here, because he wanted to thank you, the City Council, and also wanted to thank Rick, because he hasn't had opportunity to meet and Rick and shake Rick's hand, also Mike Davis, many of us know Mike Davis, was one of the first ones there to respond, as well as Jerry Bowman. Randy's not able to be here, because he got tested positive with COVID last week, but he is on Zoom, he wanted to say a few words to y'all, but anyway, with that being said, I'd like to pass the mic over to Chief Torres.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Members, Mr. City Manager, on behalf of our officer and your police force, we want to tell you that we are so honored and so prepared to serve all our citizens, especially in an emergency, so we're very honored of our city employees that were involved, that were involved in this incident, so thanks to all of them, and thank you all.
Mayor, if I may, I was, I was leaving our seed building when the incident was occurring, and so I ran across to witness not only, you know, Rick administering CPR, you know, but the collaboration of teamwork that our staff did to react quickly and calmly to be able to, you know, take control of the situation, and also, you know, save this gentleman's life, you know, I do want to thank them for that, you know, we are requiring our staff to go through CPR training for that purpose, because again, we don't know when, you know, the incident will add occur, so thank you all for reacting quickly, you know, thank God that he was able to, you know, come back, and thank you all for assessing that, so appreciate that.
Is it Mr. Hall on Zoom? Yes, Mr. Hall, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, you have the floor.
Good, thank you, hello, and good afternoon, Mission City Council and City Directors, I certainly want to apologize for not being there, and I'm certainly disappointed, but I guess COVID had some other different plans. Second, I want to congratulate Rick as Employee of the Month, and thank all who assisted him in getting me back again. I would certainly give, if I could, I would give them all, all of them an extra days, an extra week of vacation and a bonus check, but he'll certainly have to, they'll have to definitely talk to Brad about that when they do their yearly evaluation. This situation shows the importance of an AED close at hand, and proper personnel trained in lifesaving techniques, and obviously, Mission, you've got it down. I'm going to be playing again at the Mission Rec Center in a week or so, and I'm just hoping that all the players, when they see me go on the court, don't run and hide and go back to their cars thinking, I don't want any part of this guy. So I want to thank all of you very much for your assistance, and I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike, can I ask you two to come up?
There you go. You want to bring your wife?
Your parents, or your fiancee?
Jessica.
Mom dead?
Mom dead? Unretrotable photo? Okay, good. Thank you.
Well, I did mention Mike's name, but I'm glad that he was able to come up here. Mike pushes us, he likes the sport, and anyway, we appreciate all that Mike does, he kind of connects us with the pickleball group, but anyway, also here, not that we need recognition, I just wanted to know, want y'all to know that we do work as a team, there's always differences of opinion at times, but anyway, we all, everybody's conversing, everybody was talking, Juanita, I was over here, and Randy was at the seed building, and I, right when I came in, you know, Juanita had called me to let me know that there had been a situation we needed to address, but anyway, Juanita Alvarez, my administrative assistant, is here, Taylor Galvatos is here, and of course Randy, I mean, Pete Lopez and Pete Charles and George Chapa, we're with George now, but anyway, just wanted to say thank you for giving us all the opportunity to serve y'all, and the citizens of Mission.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is a presentation by Spear Memorial Library.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, today is a momentous day in the City of Mission, we are here to acknowledge and celebrate, and this tenure with the City of Mission.
Can we have the, can we have your board members here, I see a few of them.
Yes, we have Liz Garcia, we have board members here attending with us. Yes, we have Rusty.
Can we have them come up?
Her family's here.
Have them come up.
Yes, do y'all want to come up?
If y'all can please come up.
Please come up.
Yes.
Oh, you know, we saw where's our Belinda? So we're here to celebrate Belinda, she's going to be retiring officially at the end of the month. So we'd like to acknowledge Belinda, Ms. Belinda Garza today, she's retiring after 44 years with the city, she started back in 1978 in the municipal court, she was there for four years under Judge Arturo Leal, she was actually the first municipal court clerk with the city.
Wow.
She was even municipal court judge for six months, so we have a judge here also. Later, she went on to emergency management for two years under Fire Marshal Lucio Guerra Jr., then in August of 1987, she landed in the library, and she's been there ever since. She worked with the library director, Diane Claudel, Margaret Handrell, and then 1990, Mr. Rusty Dove arrived at the library. She worked together with Rusty for 20 years, from 1990 to 2010, and then that's when I took over, and she's been with me ever since. Belle, we want to say thank you so much. For your invaluable service to the citizens of Mission for the past 44 years. You've seen the change, and you have been part of the change and the growth of this community. You have played an important role in each position that you have had, that you have held throughout your tenure, you have touched many lives, and we hope the City of Mission has touched ours as well. To your family, thank you so much for lending her to us for these past years. We love you so much, and we're going to miss you. We have a plaque for her, we have roses, and lots of love. Thank you. Lots of love.
Do you want to say something, Belle?
I just want to thank the City of Mission for giving me this great opportunity to have been here, right after high school, my dad, may he rest in peace, but he's the one who kept pushing me to go apply, the court needs a secretary, the court needs a secretary, and knowing my dad, he kept on and on and on, finally, I applied, and things were very different then, I actually got interviewed by the City Secretary, Derek Delde Garcia. When I got to, I finally, they called me that I got the job, so I went to the Police Department, and the person who showed me how to do all the books was Connie Garza, because they didn't have a municipal court clerk, so Connie showed me how to work all the books, and I was there, you know, with the judge and taking care of everything, and back then, he was a part-time municipal court judge, so we did, I was a full-time employee, but he was only half-time, there part-time, and I was there for eight years, for eight years, and after that, I went to work for emergency management, and again, things were different back then, emergency management was under the Fire Marshal, which was Lucio Guerra Jr., and two years after that, the City Manager called me in and wanted, they needed a secretary to enter the phone, so I went and I worked for him, but he was doing that throughout the whole city, and I got transferred to the library where I stayed, and I've learned a lot at the library, it's a library, but can you not learn, so I've had a lot of fun, I know Angie, the Finance Director, asked me, why have you been here for so long, I guess you enjoyed the ride, and yes, I've enjoyed the ride. So thank you, everybody, and I've had lots of city managers, maybe eight mayors, I don't know, lots of them, so I've seen a lot of new faces in the city, but again, thank you, thank you to each and every one of you, Mayor, Council, it's the best, City of Mission is the best, it really is, again, thank you, and thank you for that time, I believe, sometimes I wasn't there, because I have to be here for council meetings or board meetings, so thank you for keeping up with me, and thank you for being here tonight, it's special, I love you all.
I just want to say as a board member that we're really going to miss Belinda, because she actually trains us all, and I think we've been together 30 years on the board, and there is no, there will be no replacing you ever.
Thank you, Ms.
People will come and people will go, but Belinda, you're one of a kind, truly, you are of the utmost of sincerity, kindness, and knowledge, oh my goodness, she just keeps us on our toes, we need to ask Belinda, that's all we ever say, Myra, you know that, right? Yes, so Belinda, you will be greatly missed by the board.
Thank you, Liz, thank you.
Hold on, let him take a picture.
Don't let him take a picture.
Yes.
Boyen.
Boyen.
One more, Liz. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I do want to just, you know, one, congratulate Ms. Belinda for her years of service and wish her the best of luck in her retirement. I do want to announce that she has been the longest-serving city employee, 44 years. So congratulations and thank you.
I just want to add that there will be snacks and refreshments in the community if anyone wants to join us afterwards.
So just a fun fact, I've known Belinda since I was 13 years old. It's been a while. Okay, alrighty, so the next item is departmental reports. Those were in our packages. Are there any questions, concerns?
I'm going to approve the reports as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the reports as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is citizens' participation. Has anyone signed up?
Yes, Mayor, we have Mr. Jim Barnes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and the rest of the councilmen. I'm Jim Barnes from Mission. I'm a member of the objective watchers of the legal system, the owl, and I have a question about planning. I noticed that many of the tracts of land that are brought up here are sometimes brought up multiple times. And it's brought up, I think, after it's been turned down once. How many times do you have to say no? I got a question, if you have something in your mind to do some more investigation. We'd ever hear that investigation, you may, but we don't. We would like to hear any additional investigation that you do. And one particular place that you approved the conditional use permit last meeting was at the Taboo Bar and Grill. I can remember in past years that the police chief would get up and talk about how many disturbances there were at that location. That should be something we talk about in following years, when that same location comes up for renewal. Was there any more disturbances? Did they do any corrective action, and how effective was it? I think we need a little more transparency and a little more looking into what we're doing to protect our citizens. Thank you.
Victor, can I respond to that?
Come on, you may.
I may, okay. Just, Mr. Barnes, just so, just so that we're clear, that conditional use permit was not allowed, it was turned down at our last meeting. It was it was denied. Yes, it was denied at our last meeting. It did come up for review again, but it was denied. Just so you know.
It was denied a couple of years ago.
I'm sorry?
Taboo should have been denied a couple of years ago.
Well, we gave him an opportunity, but this time it was, it was denied. Okay. All right, is there anyone else?
Yes, ma'am, I have Irma Flores Lopez.
Good evening, City Council, City Manager. My name is Irma Flores Tuavo on Carola, and I just brought a bucket of grapefruits, just to remind you all what this week is, Texas Citrus Fiesta. We hope to see you at the coronation on Thursday at 7:00 at the Mission Event Center, and then of course, on Saturday, we have our parade. My sister and I were complaining about this and that, so we met with the Texas Citrus Fiesta Director, and you all know us, we open our mouths, but we also walk the walk. So we've been volunteering for two weeks, and I got 800 pounds of grapefruit donated by King Citrus Judge Flowers, who used to do a lot of farming with my grandfather, Sabino Soto. Tomorrow morning, we're going to hit downtown and decorate the windows the way they used to be back. Some of you are very young and you don't remember, but I remember the windows used to be decorated at Mission Dry Goods, Ben Sam Anthony's, and we're going to hope that people get encouraged. We did get ahold of Ms. Brenda over there at the chamber, and hopefully she's helping with that. But we, again, this is a time for families, and we have a good time every year, and I'm so glad we're able to help. Estra Salinas has been helping, my sister Hilda, Cynthia Samora Pacheco, and Belinda DeForest. And the Citrus Fiesta staff have been wonderful and welcoming, and we're here to stream, mind you. And we hope to see you, because we didn't see some of you at the ball, I won't mention names, but hopefully Thursday and Saturday. Thank you. We do have flyers, and I have a trunk full of grapefruit and oranges that I packaged, and they're going to be in the lobby if anybody wants to take them home. Enjoy.
Good afternoon, Esther Peña Salinas. Now, I'm representing the Mission Sunset Lions Club. What we did was, we walked 40 businesses this weekend, and we took all the signs, a lot of people, newcomers, younger people, that were so happy, they were, "When do you have a parade?" And so we gave them these, and I know I was fussing like, "Oh, digital, can you give me a hard copy?" And so they put them on their businesses, and they were so happy. What time does it start? The businesses are so happy that it's going to start the parade at 12 instead of 3, because we got nothing by wah-wah-wah-wah-wah. No, you're cutting our business and you're cutting our beauty shop, and, okay, don't kill the messenger. But we did tell them also the new parade routes. So we did hit 40 businesses and welcoming in, there was a lot of new businesses, but we have been working on baskets, pero ahorita, between baskets and dresses and gowns, you get wah-wah-wah, but we're going to make all of y'all one, and we're excited. We're getting the community, we want all the schools to come out, the churches to come out, all the citizens to come out, and it's going to be a great day, so ahí los esperamos a todos. We're going to give this one to the mayor, but Jessica, we're working on yours.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's fresh, it's done, it's finished.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for the fruit basket. It looks great. Anna, is there anyone else?
No, ma'am, I didn't have anyone else.
Okay, alrighty. We're going to move on to the public hearing. We only have one item for a public hearing, and that is a redesignation of land use, a 3.91 acre tract of land situated in Portion 58, out of Lot 124 Johnny Sherry.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council and City Manager. We, staff did receive an email from the applicant requesting that this item not be considered today. They were not able to come to the meeting since they are out of town, although we did send notices out and published, so it's really up to you if you want to pursue it.
I would like to proceed with the public hearing at this point.
Okay. Item 1.1 is a redesignation of land use. It's a 3.91 acre tract of land situated in Portion 58, more or less out of Lot 124 Johnny Sherry subdivision. This is from PUD, AOI Agricultural to Plan Unit Development Multifamily. The applicant is Carlos Andrade and Angelica Trevino. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately 180 feet west of Sherry Road along the south side of Hunt Valley Road. Surrounding zones include Plan Unit Development to the northwest and south, and Neighborhood Commercial to the east. Existing land uses include residential to the north, there's a commercial plaza on the east, and to the west, south, and the site are currently vacant. The future land use map shows this area as low-density residential. The proposed zone does not comply with city's future land use map nor surrounding land uses. P&amp;Z and staff recommended denial. There was public opposition during the planning and zoning hearing. The concerns were in regards to drainage, flooding, privacy. They did submit a petition, and it was about 5% in opposition, I mean, to the request. If the council is inclined to approve this item, a 4th vote would be required. This item is now before you.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? If you would come up to the podium, please, and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Charles Garrett. I live in Mission. Been here for 25 years or more. And I've enjoyed all of it. The people that presently, it's my understanding, what I've been told, that they're wanting to build high-rise, and we've got homes in Cimarron, and we don't mind other houses, but we object to high-rise apartments. One, I'm an engineer, I ran a McIlroy for 15 years, and I know that we've had problems with sewage in area. You get high-rise, somebody needs to do an estimate on what it's going to do to that, okay? But that's not what my statements are for tonight, it's just a technical question, but we object. We had a meeting here some months ago, and there was quite a few of us, and we just hope that it stays the way it is, the way in which we bought our homes, we moved here. I came here to be here for a couple of years and moved, we're still here. You've got a very nice community, and I'm glad to see the awards that were given tonight for our long employment in the service of Mission, because it's a very nice city. Let's don't change it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Larry Fair. I live at 122 Rio Grande Drive. I'm currently president of the Cimarron Home Association. I think I speak for many of the residents on our concerns. We are all in favor of single-family homes, not multifamily condos or apartments. We don't want lots of traffic in and out of our, on one single road. We don't want condo owners looking down into our backyard of homes. I worry that if these condos are slow to sale, will they turn into short-term rentals, VRVO, Airbnbs? This project could be great for the City of Mission, I just don't think this is the right location. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition? Please state your name and address.
Anita Iglesias, 2113 Pico Street. I'm aware that this petition was already denied, more than six months ago. The questions that were asked before were, they did, if they did a study on impact on traffic, schools, sewage, water, everything. Has anything changed for good on that? Because, I mean, it's the same thing. So, and yes, as Larry represent us, we don't mind if they build houses, but not high-rises.
High-rise, okay.
Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Okay, there being none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at this point.
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Nice second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, at this point, we can move forward with a motion or, or, well, it would need to be a motion.
I would like to make a motion to deny.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to deny the request of moving, changing this to a multifamily residential area from AOI open, agricultural open interim. So the, it is, the motion is to deny the request. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you.
And that would be ordinance number 5274. No, we don't need an ordinance, because we didn't pass it, sorry, sorry. So, thank you all for being here, and hopefully this will send a message to the developers and maybe bring something different next time. All right, the next item is consent agenda, and that is approval of minutes, regular meeting January the 9th, acknowledgement receipt of minutes, Parks and Recreation Board, December 8th, zoning board of adjustments, December 19th and October 26th, Planning and Zoning Commission, October 12th, November 16th, and November 21st, Mission Civil Service Commission, November 3rd. Number 11 is authorization to execute second one-year renewal option for electrical repair and maintenance services for water treatment plants. Number 12 is authorization to extend first three-month renewal option for the purchase of ready-mixed concrete for the Public Works Department. Number 13 is authorization to purchase automotive parts, fluids, maintenance equipment, and supplies from Autozone Region 4 R211201 for Fleet Department preventative maintenance. Number 14 is authorization to set up pre-negotiated hourly rates and parts markup for the fleet repairs on all city units to include special equipment and sanitation units. Number 15 is authorization to submit grant application for Y222 Assistance for Firefighters' Grant Program to the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. Number 16 is approval to accept the 2023 SH Bullet Resistant Shield Grant from the Office of the Governor. Number 17 is approval of resolution number, would that be 1810? 1810, authorizing the submittal of a grant application for the 2023 State Homeland Security Program. Number 18 is authorization to submit a grant application to Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation. Number 19 is approval of resolution number 1811, authorizing the submittal of a grant application for the 2023 State Homeland Security Program to the Office of the Governor. Number 20 is approval of resolution number 1812, requesting financial assistance from the Texas Water Development Board, authorizing the filing of an application for such assistance. authorizing the filing of an application for such assistance, and designating the mayor as the authorized representative. That would be 1812. 21 is authorization to purchase rugged laptops via DIR contract. Number 22 is authorization to provide the required notice to terminate an existing contract with King Gera Davis &amp; Garcia PC and subsequently solicit proposals for delinquent tax collection services. Number 23 is approval. I'm sorry, no, that was, that's the last one. Number 22, I was gonna say, wow, that's a lot.
Those are all of them.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
If we can ask legal for consideration for number 20 to be discussed in executive session.
Okay, so we'll pull number 22?
No, 20, ma'am.
20, I'm sorry.
Mayor and Council, it's my, it's my understanding that that's gonna deal with possibly the evaluation of purchase, acquisition of real property. So that'd be covered under the Texas Government Code 072, 551072.
Okay.
So you would just need to make a motion to table that to discuss that portion of it in executive session. And then after executive session, we'll remove it from the table and discuss the remainder that is not protected under 072.
Okay. Is there anything else that needs to be pulled?
Mayor, could we consider item 22?
Yes. Is there anything else? Is there a motion?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda 2, just with exception of item number 20 to be table and discussed at executive session, and 22 to be reviewed.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to accept consent agenda as presented, for item 22 and item 20 to be discussed in executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Okay. The next item is item number 23, and this is approvals and authorizations. So the next item is the approval of ordinance, amending ordinance number 5224 adopting the addition of EMS administration pay.
We need to see number 22.
Where's 22?
The one for the authorization to provide the required.
Correct, correct. Mayor, you pulled item number 22 from consent to be considered individually, was my understanding. Yes.
Yeah, didn't I say 20 and 22?
Yes, but I think you're gonna consider individually item 22.
Oh.
I think maybe.
I thought we were gonna discuss that in executive session.
Just 20.
Just 20.
Just number, just 20.
Are you sure you don't wanna talk? I mean, that's a contract. Can't we discuss that in executive session?
If you have legal questions about the contract under 071, you could discuss that. But just, but just the issues as to the.
Do we have legal questions?
I don't think it's a legal question. I think we can address it in open, Mayor.
Okay, alright. I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Sorry.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item number 22 is authorization to provide the required notice to terminate an existing contract with King Gera Davis &amp; Garcia and subsequently solicit proposals for delinquent tax collection services. The city of Mission entered into an agreement with King Gera Davis &amp; Garcia. Authorization is being requested to provide the required notice to terminate this contract and solicit proposals for delinquent tax collection services. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay.
So Mayor, if I may, just how long have we had a contract with King Gera Davis with regards to delinquent tax collection services?
It's been more than, more than 15 years.
I believe it was 1999. 1999? Correct. And so the.
It's way more than 15 years.
So the motivation behind bringing this to the council is to kind of explore, to see who else provides these services?
Correct, and if they can provide, I guess, more collections and increase our collection percentage.
Okay, so then, has performance been an issue?
It hasn't been brought up, no.
Okay, but we don't know because we haven't really.
Yeah, we've never really explored other firms to see what the choices are, what the different performances are between different firms.
Got it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Are any other questions?
I think if I may add, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I think items such as this should come to council every two to three years, because we just don't know what's out there. Not to say that King Gera Davis Agency hasn't done a great job, but he can apply, they can apply again and let's see what's comparable.
Yes.
But it's all about being transparent.
Yes, and I do believe that when we had, oh, probably like three years ago, we had a workshop regarding all the contracts. It did come up, but we didn't decide at that point to go out again.
I know, I was one of the ones that requested this, because I think it's important to review that, and I think there's another couple of contracts that we need also to review. I've been in the council for 15 years, and I had never seen this.
Okay.
So there's now, I would like to move to approve the authorization to provide the required notice to terminate an existing contract with King Gera Davis &amp; Garcia and subsequently solicit proposal for delinquent tax collection services.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to authorize the required notice to terminate and solicit for proposals for delinquent tax collection services. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, you're up now, Jesse.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Mr. Perez, Mr. Flores. On this item, we're requesting authorization to amend ordinance 5224 and adopting the addition of the EMS administration pay. Back in September, with a budget process, we approved the ordinance that pertains to base pay and the incentive package at the Mission Fire Department. And Exhibit H, which is what we're looking at right now, is the assignment pay at the fire department, and it pertains to EMT. And there's EMT, EMT Advanced, and EMT Paramedic. What we'd like to add with this, amend this ordinance, is the EMS administration pay. With the transition of our city going into full-time, fire-based EMS, there's a lot of moving parts that are not looked at. And because there's a lot of moving parts, it comes with a lot of other responsibilities at the fire department. So at this time, I know we're requesting the authorization to add the EMS administration pay. And those individuals, if approved, the designated individuals by the chief with the approval of Mr. Perez in the City Mayor's office would get this assignment pay. Pertaining to the questions, what is administration pay? I know Chief Douglas is here. There's any question that, particular questions that who's gonna receive, who's gonna be designated? Chief Douglas is here. If not, we are requesting the approval to amend the ordinance at this time.
Okay, thank you. Chief, would you like to add anything?
It's just, go ahead.
No, okay. Are there any questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Plata.
Go ahead.
I just have a couple of questions for Chief. I understand that because we are moving into this EMS, fire-based EMS, some of our firefighters are having to take on additional duties, and that's the purpose of this. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir, it is.
And have they been already performing some of those duties?
They've been coming in off-duty, getting paid overtime to take care of those duties.
Okay, so then this would be kind of a, also a cost-saving measure for the city in essence, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And currently, how many firefighters do you have performing these extra duties?
Currently, four.
And is that what you believe you need for, to continue?
No, sir, we need to add a couple more.
Okay, how many is it that the fire department needs?
It'll be three to five, depending on the ebb and flow of the call volume.
And is this simple EMS duties? Or is this, what is?
Simple is not the word when dealing with state regulations and things of that nature. So the administrative pay would cover QA, QI, quality assurance and quality investigation, making sure our reports fit the billing needs so the city can bill out. The training that's coming along with this and getting our staff all up and running to meet the standards that the state and y'all set upon us. The clinical coordination of all the students going through all this. There needs to be a person going through all the hospitals and the doctors' offices as the students go to a particular site. That needs to be taken care of paperwork with all of that. The reports and reporting, pulling all the monthly reports and things of that nature. There's auditing of reports. There's the inventory, the supply, and the ordering of all the medical equipment. There's the narcotics side of it, which is its own DEA regulations. Compliance with the TRAC, which is the health organization. The compliance with the Texas Department of Health. The compliance with National Registry and the compliance with DEA. There's also the training, field training officer and the preceptor to take care of those students when they're actually on our ambulances.
Okay, thank you. I have no more questions, Mayor.
Okay.
So this would like, Councilman Flores was saying, so this is gonna reduce our overtime?
We hope to. It's all in the ebb and flow of the call volume. Since the start, we have quadrupled approximately our call volume, which is a good and bad thing.
So you have right now four, and you're trying to hire two more, so there will be a budget amendment for $18,000? Or is it for the six individuals? Because do we have this on the budget?
Currently, sir, because of the individuals that he was referring to is at the point where we continue growing the EMS portion of it. Right now, we are working with one unit. Currently, we're in the process of receiving the second unit, however. So this is an ongoing growth in the department, not necessarily at this time. We do have individuals that are currently doing the administrative portion of the EMS, and not necessarily hiring individuals, but having within the department grow in the future. So it's not the three to five at this point in time.
If we amend, if we approve those individuals to be assigned the assignment pay of the dollar amount.
So my understanding is that we're not approving the number of people that are gonna receive the pay. It's just the actual pay.
Yes.
And then, once you, you know, determine the need, then that's when you would ask for it on an operational side.
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. So at this point, we're just, we're just.
Amending the ordinance to allow the.
For the $3,000 administration pay.
I'm good with the administration pay. I just, the overtime is an issue for me because of the fact that we're still gonna pay on top of that. So I guess, Chief, we need to keep an eye on that?
Yes.
Just to make sure that, you know, the guys are being taken care of? Because we don't wanna overwork them either.
No, yes.
If you have an overworked firefighter, that's, it can be dangerous. So we need to really pay attention on that. And then come to us and let us know if it does.
Yes, ma'am.
And we'll look it over again.
Well, we have approved to hire 10 firefighters. Had they been hired?
Yes, sir. I think we're only pending one. It's, an offer's been extended, and I'm not sure exactly where the HR process is at this time. It was a conditional job offer for the last candidate on the last position, which is that way for the returns of his medical psychologics.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could ask one more question?
Sure.
So the firefighters that are running the EMS, they're not doing firefighter duties? They're just on the EMS?
Correct.
And so you have how many, the four?
So every day, there's the paramedic and the medic on the ambulance. And then typically, the paramedic that, right now, the paramedic that comes off of shift, finishes up their reports, and then the QA, QI side, so we can get the billing taken care of, he'll, he or she. We'll knock out a couple of hours' worth of those till they just can't pretty much see straight anymore, go home, and then that medic, the next day will, and that's the way it's been going. We'd like to get someone in there to get a lot of that knocked out.
Okay. Are there any? Any other questions for staff? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the amending of ordinance number 5224, and that would be ordinance number 5274. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item? Mr. Jean-Médis.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item number 24, authorization to purchase subscription renewals, maintenance and repair hours, equipment, supplies and related products and service from Telepro, utilizing TIPS Contract 200105. Annual spend estimated to be $95,000, exceeding the $25,000 threshold, requiring city council approval. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay, are there any questions for staff?
I'm going to approve, Mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the authorization to purchase subscription renewals, as stated. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. The next item?
Item 25. Staff is seeking authorization to purchase security cameras in the server to replace at PD and fire buildings from Telepro at a cost of $12698, utilizing TIPS Contract 200105, using ARPA funds. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the purchase of security cameras utilizing the TIPS Contract 200105. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Item 26, authorization to purchase subscription renewals, maintenance and repair hours, equipment, supplies, and related products and service from Safeguard, utilizing TIPS Contract 200203. Annual spend estimated to be $60,000, exceeding the $25,000 threshold, requiring city council approval. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the purchase of subscription renewals, maintenance and repair hours from Safeguard utilizing TIPS Contract 200203. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Item 27. Authorization to purchase subscription renewals, maintenance and repair hours, equipment, supplies, and related products and service from Insight, utilizing DIR Contract TSO 3763, TSO 4160, TSO 4167, TSO 4343, CPO 4877, CPO 5030, and OMNA Contract 4400006644. Annual spend estimated to be $70,000, exceeding the $25,000 threshold, requiring city council approval. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.[1654.48]
Second.
A motion and a second to authorize the purchase of subscription renewals, as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item. Mr. Benson.
Good evening, again, Mayor and City Council. I have before you item number twenty-eight, which is approval for purchase and installation of sunshades via state-approved buy board vendor for the purchase and installation of four sunshades over exercise station and playground equipment from Tenzo McAllen LLC in the amount of one hundred thirty-five thousand, one hundred eight dollars via state-approved buy board contract number six seven nine dash two-two. This purchase will be made utilizing ARPA funds. Sunshades will be installed over the newly-installed exercise equipment at Hollis Rutledge Senior Park and Playescape Equipment at Hollis Rutledge Senior Park, JC, and Anoffel and Amnouf Tatan Rodriguez Junior Parks. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the purchase of and installation of sunshades via state buy board vendor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Next item.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item number twenty-nine is the authorization to approve change order number three for the construction of the Esperanza Drainage Improvement Project as part of the twenty-twenty-one drainage project for the City of Mission, approving an increase to the original contract amount of five million, four hundred eleven thousand, four hundred thirty dollars by an additional amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand, nine hundred twenty-five dollars and five cents for a total current contract amount not to exceed five million, seven hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred fifty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents, including all previously approved change orders. Due to the revision of project plans, work consistent installation of sewer line to tie in sewer services that were in conflict with storm line and couldn't restore pavement. Because of these revisions and additions, the amount for the project increased by fifty-four thousand, nine hundred twenty-five dollars and five cents. Therefore, City Staff is recommending a change order for the total amount of five million, seven hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred fifty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
So when we did our plans, I mean, it seems like we would know where the storm line is and where the sewer line was going to cross, right? When we're making our plans?
Correct.
But something happened here that we didn't catch that?
Here, where there are the sewer services, there, we have a main line for sewer, and we have for each home, there's sewer services that crosses through that main line. The conflict here was for the sewer services that were across the street. The sewer line, the main line, is on one side of the street. The storm line is going to be in between those, and there was a conflict there. They couldn't go over or under that storm line. There was actually a picture we had where it went through. We don't want that for storms, so the best-case scenario for the change order was to install a new sewer line on the south side and connect all these services to that new sewer line.
Oh, okay. Got it.
Mayor, there's no other questions I would like to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the approval of change order number three for the construction of Esperanza Drainage Project in the amount of fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and five cents. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Next item.
Item number thirty is the authorization to award contract for sludge management services for South Water Treatment Plant Reservoir to Denali Water Solutions LLC. These sludge management services for the South Water Treatment Plant Reservoir for the transport and disposal of sludge and liquid in solid form. Denali Water Solutions LLC was a sole bidder for RSV twenty-three zero zero eight ten twenty-four with an original bid amount of two million, six hundred sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. After negotiations with the award amount of eight hundred thousand dollars to remove half of the sludge from the South Water Treatment Plant or twenty-five thousand cubic yards of material, whichever comes first. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay.
I just got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So what is the total amount that is after the negotiation of eight hundred thousand dollars? So do I subtract that?
That's the, that's the total.
That's the total.
It's eight hundred thousand.
So, okay.
So we're approving the amount of eight hundred thousand, is that correct?
Correct.
But we're, they're also not going to do the entire reservoir.
The two-point-six.
They're only doing partial. Is that right?
That's correct.
And do we know how many cubic yards of sludge we have in there? Because this is over twenty-five thousand cubic yards of material.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, JP Terraza. So the initial contract was for fifty thousand cubic yards at fifty-three dollars per cubic yard. We currently have a contract with Denali that we use them for our wastewater treatment plant and water treatment plant, but because we're using ARPA funds, we solicited for bids. So since they were the only bidders on this contract, they submitted a competitive bid. So we went back to our original contract that we have with them, the existing contract, which they're giving us thirty-two dollars per cubic yard. So we negotiated with them to only do half of it, which is twenty-five thousand cubic yards at thirty-two dollars per cubic yard, which brings you to a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or a motion?
There's a motion. I'll second.
Who, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Okay. All right. There's a motion and a second to authorize the award to sludge management services for the South Water Treatment Plant in the amount of eight hundred thousand dollars. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Next item.
Item number thirty-one is the authorization to award bid for the Mission City Hall Re-roof Project. City of Mission accepted and opened three bid responses for the City Hall Re-roof Project. Staff recommendation is to award bid to the CS Advantage USAA Inc., who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specifications. Construction cost base bid of eight hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars plus alternate number one at a cost of four hundred forty thousand dollars, alternate number two at a cost of twenty thousand dollars, and alternate number three at a cost of twenty thousand dollars for a total bid of nine hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Move for approval.
Second, but I got a question.
Go ahead.
What is alternate one, two, and three in total?
Yes. Alternate number one. So we have the total building plus the front of the, this article here, by the entrance, and we also have the drive-through, where we pay, the residents pay their water bill. Those are part of the alternates. Off the top of my head, I don't recall the exact order of which ones they are. Let me see here.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The rest of the alternates is the plumbing on the roof where the ACs are draining to, and the third alternate is the lighting on the, on the heaves of the roofs. Those are the three alternates I would have. So the drive-through, the canopy, the drive-through, and the plumbing, and the lighting. Those are the three alternates.
Okay. So then, do they guarantee, like, there's going to be a, I lost my train of thought. You know how if something happens within, like, how long is a warranty? That's, there's a word I'm going to keep.
The workmanship, it's a year and a half, and the materials is ten years.
Okay.
I move for approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the bid for, to re-roof Mission City Hall for a total bid, including alternates one, two, and three, of nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Item number thirty-two is the approval of the November twenty-twenty-two tax collection report. We have the total adjusted twenty-twenty-two tax levy at twenty-nine million, one hundred ninety-one dollars, one hundred ninety-one thousand, forty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents, and the amount of collections as of November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two is two million, forty-seven thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars and thirteen cents, which represents seven point zero one percent of the total twenty-twenty-two tax levy. The total adjusted delinquent tax levy is two million, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents, and the amount of collections as of November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two is ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents, which represents three point ninety-two percent of the total delinquent tax levies. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
All right. Are there any questions or a motion?
How does that compare to last year's?
So last year, the current levy was at eight point eight four percent, and the delinquent tax levy was at three point nine one percent.
Which is pretty much about the same.
Yes.
I'm going to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the collection report for November twenty-twenty-two. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Next item.
Item number thirty-three is the approval of the October twenty-twenty-two financial statements. Total revenues for the month were two million, fifty-three thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars, and total expenditures were two million, eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and four dollars, leaving an unadjusted ending fund balance of thirty million, four hundred and seventy-three thousand, eleven dollars. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the October twenty-twenty-two financial statements, as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. The next item.
Item number thirty-four is the approval of the attached budget amendments. We have one in the CDBG Fund, in the Police State Sharing Fund, in the Police Federal Sharing Fund, and in the Designated Purpose Fund. In CDBG, we have nine hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars in revenues and expenditures to allocate the carryover funds for the entitlement and CARE-CV programs. In the Police State Sharing Fund, we have a hundred and five thousand in expenditures to allocate the remaining fund balance for the twenty-two-twenty-three fiscal year. In the Police State Sharing Fund, we have, I'm sorry, in the Police Federal Sharing Fund, we have two hundred and thirty thousand in expenditures to allocate the remaining fund balance for the twenty-two-twenty-three fiscal year. And in the Designated Purpose Fund, we have seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars in revenues and expenditures for the twenty-twenty-three SH Bullet-Resistant Shield Grant from the Office of the Governor for the Mission Police Department. Funds will be used for the bullet-resistant shields for the school resource officers. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Are there any questions or a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the budget amendments, as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item. Mr. Pettis.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item thirty-five is the authorization to enter into a contract with Real Grand Valley Humane Society for the operations of the Mission Animal Shelter. This is an agreement that the city would like to ask for authorization. The city would retain ownership of the Mission Animal Shelter, and the Real Grand Valley Humane Society will operate it under the supervision of the City Health Department, the Health Director. The contract shall commence upon the signature of all parties and shall continue thereafter for three years, and shall have the option to extend the term by up to three twelve-month extension periods by giving written notice, not more than ninety days prior to the expiration of the initial term. The society shall operate the shelter at a minimum of eight hours per day, seven days a week. The city agrees to pay a total for the year, a four, a hundred thousand annually for twelve months, installments of three hundred, thirty-three thousand, three thirty-three each month on or before the tenth day of the calendar month. And this is the agreement, again, for the RGV Humane Society. They are here, the executive director is here, along with the, with the chairman of the board, to answer specific questions, but it is a program that we want to implement here in the city that would benefit not only our city animal shelter, but also our citizens to be able to provide, you know, spay and neuter services, as well as adoption clinics, rescues, and also having a designated veterinarian twice a week here in our city to be able to perform the surgeries that are required, to be able to offer that at a discounted rate to our citizens. That is a commitment that we are asking them to do. Again, they currently have a established network to, for rescues and also adoptions, as well as the different partnerships with the different veterinarians. And so we're asking authorization for entry into a contract. Legal department has reviewed the contract and made some revisions. That has been updated and is okay with the Real Grand Valley Humane Society as well. And again, they're here for any specific questions, if you have some.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
If you could please come forward. Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
I can speak for my colleagues and myself. I've been a big advocate for our animals, the voices in our community, and I'd just like to, you know, welcome you to our city, but also ask a question. We strive to become a no-kill shelter. So will you be able to help us with that?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Our target date for achieving no-kill is ninety days. We believe confidently that we will shorten that window substantially, but given that it's the summer season, and if you know anything about sheltering and animal control call volume typically in the summer, that's when the litters are all being born, but we think with the team that we have in place and our track record of proven programs, that within ninety days, Mission will be a no-kill city.
My second question is, you know, our community is just so vast, and we have so many volunteers that come in and give their time on a daily basis. You now will be in charge of looking through that and making sure, and I hope that you welcome our citizens to help with your all's endeavor and help us be a successful animal shelter now.
Yes, ma'am, that's our model. We by no means hold ourselves out to be the experts. You know, obviously, we do have a lot of experience running shelters, but when it comes to our mission, it is serving the community, and it is only with the community's buy-in that we can accomplish this. So, yes, we are absolutely excited to start this journey together.
Thank you.
Are there any, any other questions?
I did read the article on the paper, you know. So do you have any other municipalities working with the Nanda RGV Humane Society?
Yes, yes, sir. So up until Friday morning, we were known as the Humane Society of Harlingen, and we have been partnered with them since the early nineties. I've not been there that long. I've been there since twenty-twenty, and we've been no-kill since twenty-twenty. Throughout COVID, throughout all the different, you know, uncertainties that have happened over the last few years, we've managed to stay a no-kill shelter, and now we're offering community resources to our, our fellow valley residents that were never offered before, including our monthly vaccination clinics and our weekly spay neuter. And on top of that, we save over ninety percent of all the animals that come into our facility. In fact, twenty-twenty-two is the highest save rate ever. We saved ninety-four percent of the four thousand animals that came in. So we are very excited to keep that going, and Harlingen is a valued partner, and our goal is to address this regional issue of stray overpopulation and lack of access to care as a region, and this is the first step in bringing the valley that much closer together, and we're excited that Mission is taking the first step.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
There's no other questions. I would like to move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize to enter into a contract with the Real Grand Valley Humane Society for the operation of the Mission Animal Shelter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero.
Can you guys stand up, just to, so we can recognize all of you, please, all of you that are here in, in support of our, for families? Yes, thank you so much. Thank you for your commitment. Thank you.
Ma'am, if I just may add, you know, assuming everything is, goes well, we are scheduled to commence February first.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next item is unfinished business, and as far as I know, there are, there is none. Next, routine matters, the City Manager's comments.
I guess, ma'am, I do have several announcements for the community, starting Tuesday, tomorrow, January twenty-fourth, the Real Grand Valley Food Bank will be partnering up with the City of Mission on a food distribution at Nolte Park, eleven fifty-six Adam Street, from nine AM to eleven AM. Also, on Thursday, we will be having the Texas Citrus Fiesta Coordination on Thursday, January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three, at the Mission Event Center. Also, on Saturday morning, we will be hosting the Mayor's International Brunch, January twenty-eighth, at nine AM at the Mission Event Center, followed by the twenty-twenty-three Texas Citrus Fiesta Parade of Oranges, Saturday, January twenty-eighth, at twelve PM and noon. Also, we are partnering up, as everyone is aware, we are participating in the As Time Texas Community Challenge, and we'll be asking the community to participate in the Mission Parade Walk, and that's Saturday, January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. The first one hundred participants will be receiving a T-shirt. Again, we encourage all the community to come out to participate in the Mission Parade Walk. Also, next week, we are scheduling the Mission Day in Austin at the Capitol. That is January thirty-first, February first, and February second, where we'll be meeting with the legislators on the legislative ask for our, the City of Mission. Also, there is a vaccine clinic scheduled for next month in, for the Mission Possible Pet Vaccine and Microchipping Clinic, February eleventh, from nine AM to one PM at Banworth Park. And also, the Parks and Recreation is continuing the Music at the Park next month, starting February tenth, twenty-twenty-three, at Leo Pena Placita Park from six-thirty to nine-thirty. That's what I have.
Okay. Thank you so much. The only comments that I have is I'm looking forward to, to our Texas Citrus Fiesta as it continues, and the theme is Once Upon a Fiesta. So we'll see you on Thursday and Saturday, and I think it's going to be a great event. So we're hoping that everybody can come out and show your support. Thank you so much. Any, Jessica, any comments? No, everybody be safe.
No comments.
No comments, Mayor.
No comments.
Okay. All righty, then. We'll move on to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections five-five-point-zero-seven-one and also five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two. May I have a motion?
Move for executive session.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to go into executive session pursuant to those two codes, Texas Government Codes. We'll be, we'll be right back. We'll be, we'll be right back.[558.29]
Is there a, I don't know if anybody hear yet.
Just wanna make a motion?
Yes, I motion to reconvene.
Can I second it? Oh, there we go, there is a second.
Third.
To reconvene, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously. May I have a motion to remove item number 22 from the table?
Twenty, or some more?
Twenty, sorry, sorry, twenty.
Second.
Twenty. Okay.
Make a motion to approve?
Wait, oh, first our motion to, to remove from the table, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously. Did we have the presentation on this one? No, okay, so can we have the presentation, please? Thank you.
Commander Council. So item number 20, seeking approval of resolution requesting financial assistance from the Texas Water Development Board, authorizing the filing of an application for such assistance and designating the mayor as the authorized representative. The application would be filed and authorized with the Water Development Board in the amount not to exceed 8.4 million to provide for the cost of the construction of the North Mission Edap project. Staff and City Manager recommending approval.
I'm want to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve resolution number 1812. As, as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And...
Mayor and Council, based on discussion in the executive session, is my opinion that no action is needed for either items, executive session items one, two, or three at this time.
That being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
Or some more?
Second.
There's a motion and second to adjourn the meeting, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously.